Actions to help alleviate the risk of flooding in Buckingham. To make you aware, it is not a simple case of fitting a floodguard to the front door. It takes hours of preparation to lift and remove furniture, set up pumps, organise sandbags. Then, once water ingress occurs, we work tirelessly for hours on end trying to reduce the impact of the flood. Then, once the water recedes, we spend days and, in some cases, months repairing the damage. The impact, both physically and mentally, on home and business owners cannot be overstated. It is not acceptable now to simply say that Buckingham floods. As all of us are aware, the flooding in Buckingham is becoming more frequent. It is very easy to blame climate change. We know that climate change will have an impact, but there are other factors to be taken into consideration. Lack of maintenance of foul and surface water drains and culverts with additional pressure from the new housing developments. Again, we understand that the existing drainage system is very old, but there must be an investment to upgrade the system. There should be regular maintenance and repair scheduled by county, council, Buckingham Town Council and ANI and Water with a clear statement of area of responsibility and accountability. Our river, this should be a huge asset to the community and something to be proud of. Unfortunately, with years of neglect by the Environment Agency and by parent owners, it has become a liability. We need a plan now for a good flood alleviation scheme. The Environment Agency, that they are there, are circumstantial, we dread and need tilt to remove deposits from the riverbed and increase the water flow, together with wheel clearance and blockage removal. Additionally, they state there are other options, for example, floodwalls, embankments and demountable and temporary barriers, which help to contain water within the river channels. And storing water upstream and slowing the flow through natural flood management measures such as leaky dams. All of these options must be investigated. In the short term, we will work with the town council to update and improve the local flood action plan, which we do not appear to be action during the recent events. A couple of points that we would like to make here, simple things that would have made a difference. Road closures early on, sandbags made available, provision of a rest centre, clearance of road signs and new sandbags after the event, cleaning roads, debris from footpaths, etcetera. We need to work together in this matter. We need support. All of us here feel that Buckingham has been dismissed and ignored for far too long. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
We have an item on flooding on the agenda, so unless there are any actual questions to bring in on the group at this stage, which you almost imagine isn't the case, so we will move on with the agenda now and start the meeting proper. As you all have seen, we have a various substantial agenda for the town council meeting and we have, or for the full council meeting, and we have a planning meeting afterwards. So we should try and move through this as efficiently as we can. And so I would like everybody to try, and when you speak, if and when you want to speak, be as concise as you possibly can. And yes.
And also the most on the flooding, we've moved up the agenda, please.
Is everybody happy with that? Okay, in that case, we shall just start with the apologies for absence.
Yeah, apologies from councillor Draper.
Okay, and any declarations of interest that we don't already know about and that are pertinent to this agenda? In this case, let's move the item number ten to this place, if that's, if everybody's happy with that. Okay, so item number ten is a motion from councillor Draper.
Firstly, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the motion. This is something that I've been thinking of doing for a very long time, but having watched what's gone on recently and since nineteen ninety-eight, it's now time to actually re-examine things in light of what's happening. The motion follows the council proposal that the flooding alleviation scheme be reconstructed at Tindrit Mill. Those of us who worked present in nineteen ninety-eight will remember the scheme and that it was not taken forward. It proposes that Buckingham Town Council agrees that the nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand and one scheme should be evaluated in light of the concrete flooding, and that's the second paragraph. Following the evaluation and information being gathered, work with Milton Keynes Council, Buckinghamshire Council, the flood alleviation, the Parliamentary Undersecretary Estate for Flooding and Waters on behalf of Buckingham Town to consider what can be done to bring forward the alleviation scheme from two thousand and one. Now, there's no other sensible, logical, theoretical scheme which was demonstrated to address flooding. The scheme was to address flooding in nineteen ninety-eight, when it was brought forward after that flood. And it didn't see funding. There's a long story why it didn't receive funding. Part of it was held up. We won't go into that now. But I think the evidence says the climate's warming up. The frequency of the rainfall is not now annually or a hundred-year flood, which that scheme was to address. It's almost a biannual flood event in the area. I'm hoping that members will agree unanimously to take this forward. Because though we are not the people who can actually bring this forward, we are responsibilities custodians of the community to actually raise the issues. I cannot imagine any reason why anyone wouldn't want to do that. I'd be interested to hear other members' views on this. But I think then it's for us to apply pressure upstream to other authorities and have to actually buy into it. What we do have to recognise is the River Great Ouse is a large river. It's called the Great Ouse for a reason. It was the way that most of us got here. And it's now becoming a great menace and a burden to decent living. And by lifetime, it's becoming partly regular. There's nothing you can say which is meaningful to people who are flooded without seeming to be tried and insulted. So this is some way to try and address it long term. If we're not to address it long term, we'll be repeating this conversation with more people on an endless basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to second councillor Stutchbury's motion. And I'd also like to say that I think that when this is looked into, it needs to be discovered whether better early warning could be had if there was another monitoring station between Buckingham at Tindrit Road and Brackley, because that's a lot of water and a lot of area that has to be covered. And I think in two thousand and twenty, was it Christmas time, if I remember rightly, there was issues because either the monitoring station at Brackley wasn't affected by the flooding or it wasn't working. There's definitely some issues going on there. And I'd also wonder myself whether all the groundwork, huge amount of earth that's been moved for HS2 between Buckingham and Brackley, has got any impact on the amount of water that's actually now going into the river rather than sinking into the ground. So I'd like to support councillor Stutchbury's motion. Thank you.
Councillor Osipogan.
I think, I do rise to support councillor Stutchbury's motion, but I would also encourage that we expanded beyond what it seems to achieve. The motion, from my understanding, seeks us to engage the EA to see if they're going to introduce a scheme that was fit in nineteen ninety-eight. But haven't listened to the residents have copied it. There are seven points they've raised, which I believe we as a council can actually take steps towards. One, being our parent ownership and areas or lands that we do manage. They're not an action map. We as a council can look into and see how we can better manage our parent responsibilities. And the second is with regards to the flood plan. I know that was also raised. I think that would also be helpful if we included that in this motion, so that not only do we take steps to investigate our repair responsibilities and action notes, but also look at the flood plans to how we can improve it, taking feedback from residents who have more or less the practical experience recently. Those are the third points that was raised by the residents. Happy if they would indulge, to have picked up that point. Unfortunately, I missed it down, I went on writing it down. There were reparent ownership, there was the flood plan. What was it that one raised?
The river, the river.
Yes, so now we'll deal with engaging the EA specifically to look at how that will become dredging. But if councillor Stutchbury would indulge the residents by incorporating this three points into his motion, that is for the town council to review. So my proposal is to amend the motion to include that the town council review the current flood plan in light of the experiences of residents to take steps to investigate its repair ownership and properly maintain those areas. And thirdly, to engage the EA, Environment Agency, on the dredging of the rivers. That would be my proposal.
So that's from the main hand. Councillor Stutchbury.
I think that I actually understand all those points, all those points. The economic, they're not the flood authority, that is Buckinghamshire Council. And it's for them to, the flood plan. I understand that we are partners in that flood plan and volunteers as a community council. So I think if we're going to do that, it should be for Buckinghamshire Council to, the flood authority, to amend the flood plan. The motion recognises the EA within its wording, cover that, and it also goes further than that. It actually goes to the flooding minister, who has the sign off for these things. I think we're covering that. And the issues of drainage and whatever, that goes beyond the river area. It goes out into the communities like Midway, Mitre Street and Western Avenue. All the places which would get flooded from a high rainfall as well, which has nothing to do with the river. I'm not happy to incorporate the word, but I don't want to diminish from the direct approach that the motion was. And I think that we would do that automatically. But we have to remember, we are not the flood authority, Buckinghamshire Council. I'd be interested in other members before we agree that, to their thoughts on it. Because the chairman of planning is here, we're dealing with this stuff on the road to the bases and that. And I've been using their words before agreeing to that, because I think we have to make sure that we actually do something rather than try and say something we can't do and then disappoint. The reason I wanted this to go as it is, it's the only option on the table. And I was around long enough to know when it was on the table, had it been taken forward, we wouldn't be here today talking about Buckingham being flooded. We'd be talking about apparently the floodgate shut again this last weekend and apparently some fills have flooded outside Buckingham. And we wouldn't be talking about communities here being flooded, and that's the one thing that makes a difference.
Thank you. Councillor Cole.
Thank you, Mayor. Members may be aware that on the seventh of November, I attended the Transport, Environment and Climate Change Committee. And I put a written question to that committee, what flood prevention, protection and mitigation is being considered for North Bucks, but the River Great Ouse and its many tributaries, which frequently inundate Buckingham and the surrounding villages. My heart goes out to all our friends here, the flooding in Midway, Well Street, Nelson Street, Mitre Street, everywhere. I lived at Thornbemill for forty-four years. I know what the flooding is like. It was a constant battle in the winter. Sandbags, pumps, everything. I know how it works. These events are one, are no longer one in fifty or one in hundred years, as the Environment Agency continues to tell us. There have been five such serious events in Buckingham in the past seventeen years. Two thousand and seven, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, and now twice in twenty twenty-four. That's an average of every three point five years. The response from the chairman of that committee was we all recognise that one in a hundred years is no longer realistic. It's more like one in ten from what we can see, but to change that bigger nationally would be impossible. There's no more money available. They said my question is too complex to answer, and I had to eventually got a written response from Chris Ward, who is Buckinghamshire Council's Chief Scrutiny Officer. He said, "Funding associated with Buckinghamshire Council's flood capital programme is already allocated to existing projects, and there is no intention of reviewing this at the current time. Other reviews are going to take four, five, even longer. We can't wait that long." So I fully support councillor Stutchbury's motion as it is presented to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. What about you?
I do remember the original scheme, and it was turned out on grounds. Leaky dams are very good on small tributaries, but not on the main ouse, which comes through Buckingham. It is the Environment Agency that's got to do something. They're the only ones that are the ministerial support to actually get things done. My best bet is to look at the review for why it was dropped, because I was an advocate of dredging. And last time I got the river dredged, it did improve the risk to the town. And I do remember that time, I can't remember which year, when you had canoes going over the bridge on Tindrit Road. And if you've been flooded, and I get flooded very, to a very minor extent on top of a hill, and I can see the the dams down, and I can see what happens in the town itself. And it's, yes, it's for the resident, but it's also for the businesses in the town. I think we should look at the report and the reason why it was not implemented. And my guess obviously is about money. Things that dropped should not just be left dropped. They have to be resurrected and looked at, because things improve, technology improves. So I support having it looked at, but I wouldn't like to promise that you're going to get a new dam upstream. It's, it would be wrong to do that. But we can start somewhere and we can look at what was proposed and why it was blocked and whether there's modern ways of actually improving it. For instance, at Toaster, there are floodgates which protect a high street and they're closed when there's a danger of the river there toe flooding, and that makes a big difference. Floodgates were looked at on Well Street, but they were never implemented. I can't remember really the reason why. One of the problems is it's a highway technically, it's a ford. However, a highway that's never used. There must be a way coming around, getting around that for floodgates, because if you put floodgates in there, it would actually keep some of the volume of water back. It wouldn't stop the flooding. As you said, you might mitigate some of the harm it does. So I do support that we do something and try and look at it.
Thank you. Councillor Davies.
Thank you. So councillor Stutchbury's motion does say that Buckingham Town Council agrees that ninety-eight, two thousand and one scheme should be reevaluated. That means, doesn't mean that it should be started, taken up as it stood. It means it should be looked at again. And as councillor Maudy rightly says, things move on, things change. Ideas of how to do things change and hopefully improve over the time. The additional information, one of the documents, I can't remember quite which one it was, whether it was the cancellation or whether it was the Great Ouse catchment flood management plan, did actually mention the ford. And the proposal was to put a TRO in place to stop it from being a highway in order to be able to put floodgates or to put some sort of embankment down there. Whether that's a realistic option or not is something that I don't think anybody around this table has got the qualification to actually make that decision on. So therefore, in my assessment stands, I'll be supporting it. I believe that the professional people who are involved in these things need to look at it again, and we need to put pressure on them to do so.
Thank you. So I've got councillor Jane Maudy and then councillor Draper, who was online. Apparently. So I will take those two, but I can sense that this conversation is going in a fairly agreed direction, so I think we can move on with this item. So councillor Jane Maudy.
Well, thank you very much indeed. So basically, I support the motion. I'm just slightly concerned that saying, could you look at something that dates back to nineteen ninety-eight, that people will, you know, we just need to pick up the fact that not just nineteen ninety-eight, but actually there was a good reason for it and that something has changed. And I think that's your environmental point about it's now a one in a, you know, every ten years, I think. So I'll just make sure that point gets over in the letter. The other bit, which we haven't covered, which I was listening to the residents, was our own reaction and the town council's reaction. I know that's not part of this motion, but could I just ask through you, Madam Mayor, that the, I'm assuming councillor, it would be the Environment Committee, we have a look at our own, how we reacted to the floods and how we can help the residents?
Okay, thank you. In that case, can we try and bring in councillor Draper now?
No. Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm up north for work, so currently speaking to you from a travel lodge. Firstly, I'd just like to say that I'm obviously, I know I can't vote, but I am fully in support of councillor Stutchbury's motion as it stands. And it's really nice to hear that some of our other shy councillors have recognised that it's not, the responsibility isn't just on the homeowners, but that actually not only does Buckinghamshire Council bear some responsibility, the town council and the Environment Agency amongst other organisations. Because, you know, we all bear some responsibility. And actually, I believe the homeowners have done everything they possibly can, short of damming the river themselves. And I would just like to say that the, something that was brought to my attention is if we know the current standard for flood mitigation in planning applications for new developments, is that a local or a nationally set target? Because the OCEA Way, I noticed that, I think it was on the twentieth of November, the OCEA Way development uploaded their flood mitigation plans, which was, in their own words, they said, "The mitigation plan was enough for a one-in-one-hundred-year flooding event, which, as we've all discussed, happens about once or twice a year, plus, I think, forty percent." And to me, that doesn't seem like it's going to help. So alongside the motion, potentially something that we can look to discuss in planning is whether we can take that forward to Buckinghamshire Council or whoever the department that set the standard for flood mitigation in new planning developments. And if we can maybe look at increasing the level of mitigation that needs to be given with any development.
Thank you. Okay, so councillor Stutchbury, I will let you speak to the motion again to round out. We had an amendment on the table. Is there a second for that amendment? That doesn't appear to be the.
Territory's hidden and I'm gonna take it.
Okay. Councillor Osipogan, do you want to tell us what you are?
Yes, my proposal is for us to amend the motion to include, one, the review of Buckingham Town Council. I'd like to correct that. It's not the share council flood plan, the Buckingham Town Council flood plan. Take into consideration the experience of the residents. Two, to investigate our responsibility as a town council, as a repair owner, and ensure that we maintain our backs. And three, to also engage the EA to proceed with the dredging of the river. So the three things I did record.
Okay.
I just respond factually that we are not the flood authority. And just there was a question raised about what happened with the town council. Councillor Van Davis and I were out on the day of the flood, and the town clerk was out doing everything she could do. Buckinghamshire were nowhere near Buckingham. And it was the town clerk who went round doing whatever he needed to do with her. She was out all day trying to do stuff. The limit is what we've got. And the green spaces team, they were out all day doing what they could do, because that's all they could do. But we cannot take on the responsibility of a legal responsibility of an upstream authority. What I would suppose there is, those points that are raised, take to the next future planning committee and actually give them grandeur, because the dredging of the river, I actually have more knowledge of it than some people, because the river in itself from upstream downstream of the paint factory is full of lead, calcium and poisons from the paint factory. So dredging that becomes quite problematic and wasn't looked at. And dredging that would mean that it would be a major contaminant there, because safely you can taminate the bed of the river. There are reports available, which you can find on that. As for the flood alleviation scheme, that was two thousand and seven on the gates. There was objections to the loss of the ford. And those motions, the loss of the ford, delayed that scheme going forward. As for the other scheme, there was objections to the lodge of a badger on the railway scheme back then, and the fact that water shrapport wouldn't be able to get, one in a hundred years wouldn't be able to travel up to Tindrit. And that held that up, and it's all public record. Fortunately, I've got a very good memory of these things. The dyslexia, I remember most things. So, and so the moment goes forward, it's nothing more than we are doing, and we can't legally take on the responsibilities there. And the dredging the river, we can't legally do that until it's assessed. And the original motion would mean everything would be assessed. And trying to be prescriptive and attractive with it, we may fail the initial point of the motion. Was to actually bring them to evaluate the scheme. The scheme was proven that it would stop Buckingham flooding. It just wasn't taken forward. More we go off to try and find fault anywhere else, I know for a fact our team did all they could. Buckinghamshire Council is the flooding authority. That's where the actual legal responsibility rests. Having questioned them at cabinet over many years on things like this, I can assure you it rests with councillor Thomas Bloom, who is the cabinet member for Environment and Climate Change. And it's for him to actually come forward and speak about that. Not our town clerk and not the town councils here. They have no legal agreement in that discussion. We can take that to the next cabinet meeting if you want to and ask a question there about them responsibilities, but that's where that should be addressed. So I'm hoping, and I'll speak, this is the last time, I'm hoping that we will agree the motion unamended, so we don't dilute the intentions of it. But I will say that those other things need to be evaluated against the actualities at a future meeting, because flooding is not going away. And I have been having conversations outside this meeting with other people. I can assure you of this, not named within the meeting. And I have been doing my homework before putting this motion on the table. And I think we'll find that we have more friends than you can imagine. Thank you.
Point of order, just want to find out this document online, which is called the Buckingham Community Flop Response Plan. Can I through you ask the deputy clerk to please confirm if this is a Buckingham Town Council plan or is it Buckingham Share Council plan?
Please sit this outside of this meeting. We do now need to move forward. It is now half past seven. We have quite a lot of other things on the agenda. I know there are other people who want to speak on this one. We will come back to talk about flooding and we can no doubt come back to the town's own response as well. So let me ask again, is there a second for councillor Osipogan's amendment? That doesn't appear to be the case, in which case we have a motion that is on the table. It's been seconded. I would probably take this to the vote now, please. A recorded vote has been requested, so all those in favour, please. And that is councillor Donoghue, councillor Cole, councillor Gately, councillor Davies, councillor Jane Maudy, councillor Harvey, councillor Allen, councillor Ahmed, councillor Ralph, councillor Try, councillor Mahi, councillor Stutchbury, councillor Claude Maudy, councillor Fifman. Any against? Any extensions? It's councillor Osipogan. Thank you very much.
Before we move on, I'll ask that we do make a statement, Madam Mayor, of what's really to that, our concerns and that we want to raise whereas of this, we don't let the resident down, it disappears into another paper hole.
Councillor.
Thank you. Just something quickly, and we mentioned it in other meetings. Could the letter that's sent out and any responses to it come to our agenda so that we can see the evolution of progress?
My understanding is that this is not part of our standing orders. If we give the town clerk an instruction to write a letter, we give the. If we give the town clerk an instruction to write a letter, we give the town clerk an instruction to write the letter.
Let's be stopping that though, ma'am, just for us to see the progress of that.
Okay, I can pick this up again, but I don't think this is for a public meeting to discuss at this stage.
Uh, just make the point, um, my report questions and answers are already on the agenda for the February Planning Committee for active discussion and action.
Okay, so I, as I said, we will have multiple further discussions on this topic, so this is has been one further step that we will action now. So thank you all very much for your patience as well and for coming in. And, um, thank you.
Thank you.
You are obviously welcome to stay, but I have a funny got better things to do.
Well done, everyone.
Let us now revert to uh agenda item number three. To agree the correct, as a correct record, the minutes of the different council meeting held on the fourteenth of October twenty twenty four. Are we happy to to receive the meeting, item number four, to receive the meetings of the planning committee meetings held on fourteenth of October and eleventh of November.
Thank you. I present those to the council.
Happy to receive those. Item number five, to receive the minutes of the town centre events committee held on thirtieth of September.
I would suppose it's um the note minutes, I'd just like to say on record, thank you for a year's um continuous support from the officers, green spaces team and everybody else making sure that all the events we've done, which is the last event, which is Christmas parade. Um, without them, none of these events would happen, without their diligence and hard work and to detail the paperwork, to detail the process, the logistics, and making sure that we come in on budget. Which we do, it couldn't happen. But I propose that we record our, our wife thanks to them. The entire staff in town council for making these things possible.
And we have received those minutes, I take it. We come then to item number six, to receive the minutes of the resources committee meeting held on twenty first of October.
I'm happy to present those.
Are you to receive them?
Received.
Okay, thank you. This brings us to item number seven. This is an item that has come to full council from the resources committee. Because the resources committee is not formally authorised to make that decision. We have a report from the compliance and projects managers, if we just want to
There was a request in the resources committee. Um, there was a request in the resources committee when they were looking at their agenda to add a line um for a small budget for the C D I working group. As members will know, working groups are not, they're allowed to have their own uh budget or make um spending decisions. For the proposal that it was added, I provided to resources committee for the working group to go to then request it, uh, so differently established that that working group does actually report it for council. So they would need to go to for council to get the request. It's um, it's resources can hold that budget line, the requests were going to for council. So that's my report.
Okay, thank you.
We agree that is a great recommendation, ma'am.
Okay, do we have a second? Uh councillor Gately, seconding. All those in favour, please. And that is unanimous. It's unanimous, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Item number eight, uh, the museum environment improvement project to receive a presentation from Joanne Thompson. Joanne.
Hi. Um, okay, I'm Joanne, I'm the chair of the uh charity, the World Jail Trust that looks after the museum and the old jail. Uh, but the, the title of this um piece is slightly wrong, because I thought I was coming to discuss um the council supporting a uh heritage lottery grant application. We were trying to look in to replace the roof on the old jail from the gas roof to solid roof. Uh, but we didn't get support from the planning department. Um, and while we have been talking to different people, including uh councillor Donoghue, uh, I'm trying to be positive, the charity has been slipping into a crisis. Uh, I'm giving threats to the, to the charity. Uh, if we don't get a heritage partner to help manage the building, it's going to gradually fall into a state of disrepair. Unfortunately, um repairs and maintenance don't get the same sort of funding as the initial plans to do things with the building did. Um, I outlined some of the physical difficulties the museum is facing on one of your appendices. So I'm having to answer any, any uh questions and listen to any suggestions on those points. But the second po- problem to the charity is that if we don't get more volunteers and ultimately more trustees, we won't be able to open the museum. Uh, and it's going to reach a crisis point if we don't get another treasurer by October the next year. We won't be able to uh carry on running the museum. Um, so we intend to send a letter um out to our members and supporters, which I, again, is attached in the appendices. Um, so what we would like is our help from the council to publish this more widely to the community. Possibly with some space in the council. Uh, the, the town council and the T I C, um, so the town council via the T I C and Georgina's grant are our main supporters. Um, but we'd be really grateful for further help, otherwise we might um lose the museum. Uh, and certainly have to sort of mothball an atomic building. Um, but we do have a sort of shortlist of heritage partners we're going to ask if we get any further help from them. Obviously, I'll let you know.
Hmm, thank you very much. Uh, yes, councillor Harvey.
Thank you. I, I, I can't imagine there's anyone around the table who would want to see the old chair of all this repair. So I think you've got our support as well, yes. Um, I'd like a bit of information about what do you mean by heritage partner? I hope it's not some Czech billionaire who's about to for example. Um, I hope it might be somebody more local perhaps, or maybe have a national, a national trust. That's my first point, sorry, very spurious.
Yeah.
And secondly, in terms of volunteers, certainly, I personally would help with that in terms of social media. Um, it's the first I've heard that you're struggling to get trustees. Uh, I would certainly help any way I can. Uh, with the social media platforms that I help look after to promote that for sure. It is, as you probably know, a widespread problem for lots of local associations to get sufficient people to be trustees. And I guess in that as well, I would say there is going to be a new council, town council uh and a new Shire Council indeed, come next month. It might be willing volunteers from that new cohort um of councillors perhaps, as well as existing other hands like those who have been staying on hopefully around the table. Um, uh, but I think I wish you all good cheer. If you must on the first point, that would be great. Thank you.
Um, yes, we, we are a registered charity, we're a incorporated company, so we cannot um just do anything. Um, and so uh we have to look to, yes, a uh, an equivalent sector um heritage partner. So yes, we will, of course, be locally close.
Who likes me?
Well, um, um, I, I'd rather not say as a minute, instead of kind of like me, don't win any further discussions, but um clearly um yes, no, it won't be. Well, perhaps if there is a lottery winner. But the, the, but the problem is not just getting the money. We had a local um uh lottery winner, yes, maybe they could throw in a little bit of money, but actually it needs heritage expertise, which a bunch of volunteers don't have. Um, which is what we're, what, you know, basically what we're finding out, um, uh, coming to the crisis point. Um, and uh, as I said, particularly the um, obviously the, the board are volunteers in themselves. And so, um, you know, just to illustrate the point that uh I, I may be here as the chair, but I am also um half the company secretary, because the company secretary is out of the country. I'm also the conservator, even though I have no museum experience. I'm also the membership secretary, there's two other trustees have tried, you know, done it, tried to leave. I also try and, you know, help with the uh webmaster and the social media accounts, trying to get it out there that we need volunteers. And um, uh, help support the trustee that's got responsibility for the building, you know, servicing and all of that. So, you know, I'm retired, I'm a volunteer, I didn't really want to have a full time job. And it's, um, you're becoming a full time.
Thank you very much. So I think in the interest of time, we are certainly, I think councillor Harvey probably speaks for all of us. I would take the further um uh speakers on this item and move on to item number nine, with everybody's agreement, please.
Agreed.
Yeah. And item number nine is another motion from councillor Stutbury, councillor Stutbury.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, um, thank you, thank you, um. Especially lifting the community as long as we have, know that people are becoming, or perhaps it's just becoming more expensive to live. Um, we've got the opportunities that we had. And people who work in front of the town, they have the opportunities that we have. The motion states that um, that we um, there was a motion that went to um council in twenty twenty, um, which at that point was agreed unanimously. Um, it's just, I'm going to the environment agency, pay the word there, but never mind. Um, that went, um, agreed unanimously, um, was switched to pay, because they were all going down, um, the lights are going down. Um, um, so that was, um, as we were in twenty twenty, that motion, which was put to the council during um the Covid pandemic, was agreed unanimously. And that was the period when they wanted to go feasibility study into council becoming a um provider. The second point in the motion that town council um notes the um the money which um the government is giving, and that's all a jolly good thing. And also it's just a relevance to that point. It goes on further than that, the actual money which was given, when I look, look it up. Um, there, there would be additional um five hundred million, but there's also going to be five billion to support um new homes and, and, and thirty three thousand new homes across the country. We'd like some of those affordable houses in, in, in our community. Um. The report was supposed to have come back to a September meeting. I have questioned these repeat, um, over a cycle of four years, I've probably put in more questions on our progress in this than any other Buckinghamshire councillor could care to mention. And they're all public record. And I, and every response is that we should have that report in the autumn, but we're not actually in the autumn now. And there is to our councils processing this, in the fact that we're producing, um, thanks to the work of um Anthony and Mark and um the Buckinghamshire, a, a, a neighbour plan. This would have quite a difference in the way that neighbours' plans can be applied, if there is going to be probability of um more affordable housing. Um, and all we're seeking is to get clarity on the report and its publication at this stage, and when it will be so. Because I think after four years, I think it's a reasonable, reasonable man could say that it's probably unreasonable that it hasn't been published. Because it was agreed unanimously, it's all public minutes that I gave you. And um, and now we're getting to a situation where it seems to have faltered somewhat. It does have a direct impact on the way our plan will play out and the way and effectiveness of that local plan. And how that will batter in what we do going forward. And I hope that the motion will be agreed. I'll be interested to see if it's seconded. I'll be interested in the points, because I have got a reasonable um batch stock on the knowledge of what would put place if there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Harvey.
Um, yeah, I'm having a second to this motion, obviously. Um, the country, the counties, the town needs more social housing. It's, it's obvious. Um, there are lots of knock on effects. Um, we know that affordable housing isn't always very affordable. It depends on the mix of housing that's been built by developers. Um, often either three, four, five bedroom properties in the New York States. And even though they are notionally sold at, at next to market rates, they're still very expensive and deteriorate rents. It's been going up, um, way more than wages in recent years as the house prices. So the, the, the problem that we face is we live in a county now where many jobs are unstable, if not infilled, because people can't afford to live here, as simple as that. Um, so social housing is part of all of us. Whether we live in it or not, we need a range of housing in society to enable people to have all different incomes and, and wealth and so forth. Um, so of course, this is going to be a good thing to do. I, we've got to look into this, and if there's money available from this new government to support the development of social housing, why should we be going for it big time? And I would hope that the Shire Council would be on it um like a rash, as it were. Um, so I'm very happy to support this motion.
Okay, thank you. Just, just to be clear, uh, just factually, the motion of the substantial motion of what you want us to do, councillor Stutbury, is that the council, Buckingham Town Council, write to Buckinghamshire Council to ask for the time of reading the report, the promised report will be delivered. That is really the passion that is given in the motion, just to make clear that this is what we're voting, we'll be voting on. Councillor Donoghue.
I was going to second it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mordew.
I just wondered whether fair eyes are keeping contact as well to provide the social housing. Because Buckinghamshire got rid of all this social housing.
All the other ones as well, yeah.
So Buckinghamshire wants to provide it in council.
But the report sits, we, this is a report that sits with Yeah.
That'll be in the report.
Yeah, so, yes, councillor Davies.
I would support this, this motion, this, this um seeking to increase the, the amount of social housing. As somebody who lives in private rental housing, and, and I was quite shocked when I worked out how much I spent over the last six and a half years um on private rent, um, which is, um, yeah, a lot of money. Um, I definitely, definitely support it. People are spending more than half of their, um, their income on private rent. Um, and it's not sustainable and it's, um, it, it needs sorting.
Again, I have a feeling that this is travelling in in the same direction. So I think we can take this to the vote. All those in favour.
I will respond in order.
Okay.
I will respond.
Keep it brief, please.
I will bystand in order, we can't change in that meeting. Uh, thank you, John, for your comments. And all those positive comments, thank you sincerely. Just by information for the vote, um Buckinghamshire Council did have the opportunity to vote to um talk with the deputy prime minister about the funding. They chose not to do that at the last council meeting. But we are not Buckinghamshire Council, we're Buckingham Cam Council, and this is only to get that first part of motion actually agreed, which is to actually get this report, which will help us decide how we go forward. We do not have a contact in reports, because nobody's published it. So I hope that we can rep- um, go with a recorded vote and um, and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, so a recorded vote has been requested. All those in favour, please. Uh, and it is unanimous, so I don't need to read out the names. It's all the vote, be able to add these in. So thank you very much. Um, we have happily already dealt with item number ten. We have item number eleven to receive and question reports from Buckinghamshire Council. Council, from Buckinghamshire councillors, I think there's probably one council too many there. Um, who wants to go first?
I, I think I've got more, a longer agenda. I'll defer my right.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ossie Bogdan, you have anything?
I'll say as well, I'll defer that.
Yeah. Councillor Stutbury.
I've got a lot to say, so I'll defer it.
And so will I.
Okay, right. I, I just say that must be first, we absolutely Okay, right, I just have to say that must be a first recalcitration, councillor Satchbury. That was a very speaking feeling, but it comes round regularly, so let's move on. Item number twelve, the new cemetery tree planting, and we have a report from the estates manager, Lee, do you want to?
I have seen your report, I'm sort of leaning there, just to agree some funding and the plans that we've received with the tree planting, but hopefully in January.
Okay, councillor Harvey's first, I think.
Yes, I support the recommendation, I'm sure there will be a second somewhere, let's vote what it is.
Yeah, councillor Davies? I second that motion, okay, did anybody want to say anything apart from proposing and seconding it? Okay, in that case, let's go to the vote, please, all those in favour, and that is unanimous. We have, next, oh yeah, thirteen, thank you. Sturgis Pump at Chanders Row, toilets, again, we have a report from the estates manager, which, is there anything to add to this, Lee, or is not?
Okay, councillor Davies? I propose that we accept the recommendations and allow the work to take place.
A second.
Okay, seconded by councillor Donoghue, all those in favour, please, and again, that is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you for those, for those reports. We, fourteen, thank you.
Fourteen.
I seem to be losing my ability to count, it's probably somewhere, I'm not sure, but never mind. Reports from representatives on outside bodies, we have received an email from the Bedford Group of Drainage Boards, which, unless it is a, yes, councillor Harvey.
Well, looking at the redactions, we know who was, that was on the drainage board, that was councillor Paul Hyrum, and he, well, he's not really, he didn't stand, but then it says Blank continues to serve on the board as a co-opt member. Are we not entitled to know who Blank is, who's certainly on the drainage board, sort of on our behalf, and it's a very, very short name, I'm intrigued, really.
Okay, thank you, that's a good question, councillor Satchbury.
I draw blank on that, because it seems most unusual with public body, why Blank wouldn't be known, as long as Blank isn't representing our interests, we have discussed it to put, to make it open, the laws are great for Paul's wonderful, and, and if Blank is whatever, we need to make sure that we actually do, as we agree, appoint someone to it, so I think that was the reason for it, and I'm not sure who raised it, but I think that, I'm very against redacted reports, I think that just to redact that seems beneath them there, and I wonder what else we can ask them to see if it comes back redacted.
It's the same person, the person who has been named is, we have just had additional information that it's the same person, why this is redacted is difficult to understand.
Yeah, we have to redact it because it's named, it's somebody named in an email, so the agreement was that we would redact names.
Oh, I see, it's just been redacted on our side. Okay, but it is the same person, it's just been named in a.
Yeah, okay, fine.
Councillor Mordew.
Buckinghamshire Council on the Bedford and the Drainage Board, or used to be that, but I'm the only representative.
Are you going to redact it?
Councillor Harvey with one of my problems.
With respect to former councillor Paul Hyrum, I'll imagine he's carried on the job, I do think it's time that we have reinvigorated somebody else from a live council to be a representative on the drainage board, who can then report back as Paul used to, when he sat around this table as a councillor, so I propose that we take that forward in some trade form.
That is probably something that would need to, can we check whether that needs to come to full council or to the Environment Committee?
Or planning. I can't exactly what this email said from the drainage board, but I believe it was with reference to us having or not having a representative on that drainage board, so if we were to read the email again, I think that would give us the answer, from memory we've requested it, some issue over the fact that drainage boards are going to be rejigged or reformed, and I think they're suggesting to us that we wait until that's happened to have to be represented, but I'll have to read the email again.
It says nominated members may be any person nominated by a levy paying council, as Buckingham Town Council are not a levy paying authority, they do not hold any sort of the book of nominated membership, the town council could however look to be co-opted by the board to be considered to fill one of the agriculturally elected member vacancies.
Same. I'm not entirely sure, but, okay, councillor Davies.
I think we need to make sure that we are one of the agriculturally elected, co-opted representatives in the future.
So are we proposing that we write an email back and saying we wish to be one of the agricultural representatives? Yeah, everybody in favour?
I agree.
Yeah, I think that is voted on, I'm not sure if it's seconded, but.
Seconded.
Yeah. It is now, thank you very much. And that brings us to item number fifteen, to note that there have been no new updates of the Climate Emergency Action Plan, and sixteen, the action is to review and discuss the action report, does anybody wish to speak to any items on the action report? That is a very disciplined silence here. In that case, yeah, in that case, please note the item number seventeen, I do not have any chair's announcements, note item number nineteen, the dates of the next meetings, interim Monday the sixth of January, precept Monday twenty seventh of January, informal and interim Monday twenty fourth of February, and the next full council is on Monday the seventeenth of March. Okay, so we're not done yet, not yet, it is recommended that the following items will be likely to disclose exempt information, and that we go into private session.